So it's been working.
My daughter went to Italy for a month. It was like a hundred bucks and that was it, yeah.
Verizon.
Yeah Verizon a hundred bucks and it was, you could pay by the day. But with her being there like three and a half weeks, it was just.
Just go ahead and pay for a month.
It is amazing about cell phones made telephone calls so cheap, they don't even measure it anymore.
I know, that's right.
Sheesh.
It's all unlimited now.
When I went to college, my, I, my mom asked me to call home once a week. When she got the collect call bill, she said, don't call anymore. Oh, lo de do.
Yeah. How are you?
Good.
Oh de do. Studied up?
Came to the town council meeting.
Yeah.
Cause they have the same picture. And I brought my notes, I was trying to from that night so that I can't, when I see something, if I can get to that meeting, when it's similar, the same items, so I can see what they're doing. Cause they went back and forth on, um, on both of these.
Well, T, congratulations, you're throwing your hat into the elected ring.
Well, uh, uh, I'm, I'm throwing it in. I don't know whether anything, anybody put anything in it.
I think everybody should run for elected office at some point in their life.
Well, uh.
It's a, it's a bucket list item.
That's right, somebody said run and I said to or from. There's a limitation on the size of acreage for self-storage.
Five acres.
And those two plots together are six point one.
That's why they don't get them together.
So another question to ask. The initial review, the initial six thirty, and, and, sorry to say, did it in six days, then it went to, um, the site plan review, they just added, in five hundred and thirty-two days late, in eighty-four days later, in eighty-six days. So don't tell me that you're going to do that.
Ooh.
And I'm not sure, you know, the situation, the alteration done.
I don't know.
We had the last, the last relations of just about so. Yes, David, I've got signs in the car if you need one.
Geez.
Like looking at my notes or?
Yeah. I watched, I, I watched, but I watched it that next morning. Yeah, I was in Florida, daughter's house, I watched it. Not really very happy, didn't it?
And it, yeah.
Oh, that was nothing, they got through at nine thirty.
I was, yeah, after, the GFL gas spoke, and then we're here that much longer, but I had to, I still had to do. Yeah. Well, that one, uh, well, that one night we were here, I remember.
Yeah.
They can talk about some stuff. Uh huh, like, where would they come in? It's hard, you don't have all the, I mean, but if you want. Yeah. With a. The game microphone. Yeah. Like, kind of trees. For the, it's like, let's just fix up and move on.
Is Chuck in the lobby?
Yeah.
Is Chuck on the, virtually?
Yeah, he's gonna be on Teams. Not yet. He should be clicking join. Soon, he said he was gonna be doing that. And if that doesn't work, we've got WhatsApp too, so we've got two ways to talk to him, if all else fails. If that don't work, we'll use the carrier pigeon.
Okay. Well, I have seven oh one, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and begin with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next thing on the agenda is to review and adopt the agenda for tonight. Any questions or comments or changes from the, the board?
How move we adopt the agenda is written?
I'll second. Aye. Steven?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
And I am also, uh, review and adopt the following minutes from eight twenty-eight of twenty twenty-five, and there is a copy of that in your agenda here, in your packet. I do have one clarification on page three of seven. It says Winfrey said his reclec- his recollection was that it preempted local restrictions. I would like it to show that state statutes preempted local restrictions. Have you got that, Mason?
Okay.
Any other changes? Steven, you wanna make a motion with those changes?
Sure. Uh, make a motion that we approve the minutes of last meeting with the change we just spoke about.
I'll second.
Curtis?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I'm also out. At this time, we're gonna open it up for a public comment period. Each speaker must identify themselves, give their name, address, and each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you're here to speak on the public hearing item, there will also be a time to speak during that section as well. Anybody wanna speak? All right. I'm gonna declare the public hearing open for the conditional zoning case twenty-five oh nine, PLBD dash zero zero one three three, portion of eighty-two ninety-nine Walter Combs Way, from agricultural to CZHI, conditional zoning heavy industrial. The subject property is a point oh eight one acre portion of the lot located eighty-two ninety-nine Walter Combs Way, Guilford County Tax Parcel Number twenty-two twenty-five five four in the Bruce Township, immediately south of the intersection of Walter Combs Way and US Highway one fifty-eight. The subject property was annexed into the town of a Stokesdale as a result of ordinance number O dash two zero two five dash oh four, effective September eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The subject property was zoned agricultural within Guilford County zoning jurisdiction per NCGS one six zero D two zero two G. The county's agricultural zoning will remain in effect until the town of Stokesdale applies initial zoning to the property, or a period of sixty days has elapsed following the annexation, whichever is sooner. Therefore, the subject property will become unzoned on November tenth, twenty twenty-five, sixty days from the effective date of the annexation, if the town of Stokesdale does not apply initial zoning to the property. This is a request to apply initial zoning of CZHI, conditional zoning heavy industrial, to the subject property, subject to the conditions offered by the property owner as indicated. The proposed CZHI zoning district matches the zoning of the remaining four point eight four acres of the parcel, reference case number twenty-five dash oh two PLBD dash zero zero one zero seven, effective April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. The planning board will make a recommendation to the town, Stokesdale Town Council, which will have the final authority to approve or deny the request. The town of Stokesdale may propose additional conditions, but they must be consented to in writing by the owner. Does anybody wanna speak for or against this?
Bill Greco, P O Box three four seven Oak Ridge, speaking in favor of, on behalf of the applicant, and just want to make sure you guys are aware the applicant does consent to the conditions as presented. That's it.
Any questions from the board? Any other speakers from the floor? All right, I'm gonna declare the public portion of this closed, and the staff have a report for us.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, I think you covered the, the basics very well. Uh, this is probably gonna seem unnecessary, but I am gonna read the, the conditions into the record here, just for, again, for the record. These are the proposed permitted uses for this portion of the property that you're considering reason, or an initial zoning for. Uh, under the agricultural uses category, you have horticultural specialties. Under the accessory uses and structures category, you have accessory uses and structures customary, caretaker dwellings, emergency shelters, recycling collection points, satellite dishes and communication towers. Under the educational and institutional uses category, you have ambulance services, fire station, government office, police station, post office. Under the business professional and personal services category, you have engineering, architect or survey service, equipment rental and leasing with outside storage, equipment re- repair heavy, equipment repair light, landscape and horticultural services, truck and utility trailer rental and leasing light, truck tractor and semi rental and leasing heavy, building supply sales with storage yard, that's actually under the retail trade category, excuse me. Under the wholesale trade category, you have agricultural products, other, farm supplies, other, flowers, nursery stock and forest supplies, forest products, hardware, lumber and other construction materials. Under the transportation warehousing and utilities category, you have recycling processing centers, raw material hauling, utility company office, utility equipment and storage yard, utility lines and related appurtenances, utility services facility with no outside storage, utility substation and warehouse, general storage enclosed. Under the manufacturing and industrial uses category, you have concrete, cut stone and clay products, contractors with no outside storage, contractors for general building, contractors for heavy construction, contractors for special trades, wood containers, wood products miscellaneous. Uh, and under the other uses category, you have temporary construction, storage or office, real estate sales or rental office with concurrent building permit for permanent building and Christmas tree to sales. A lot of the information you have most likely already heard as part of the, the, the reference case that you mentioned for the other portion of the property that, that occurred earlier this year. But again, Chair, you covered the, the basics of it, I'll just present my, uh, well, a consistency statement regarding the future land use plan, and then, uh, a recommendation. And so, in terms of the Stokesdale Future Land Use Plan adopted in two thousand and seven, which recommends professional slash manufacturing corridor for this property, it's considered consistent with that future land use designation. As far as the reasonableness of the request, staff considers the request to apply an initial zoning of CZHI, conditional zoning heavy industrial to the subject property as reasonable, because the proposed rezoning or proposed initial zoning would match the existing zoning of the remainder of the lot, which comprises approximately four point eight four acres, as you mentioned. Additionally, there are several other industrially or commercially zoned properties in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. The proposed conditional zoning district would also permit many commercial and industrial uses, which have the potential to benefit the community through the creation of jobs and provision of goods and services. Therefore, staff recommends approval, and because the request is consistent with the future land use plan recommendation of professional slash manufacturing corridor, if the request is approved, a future land use map amendment would not be required. And that concludes my, my staff report.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
What does it mean if it becomes unzoned?
That is a slightly tricky question that Chuck may be able to offer more insight into. But it would essentially not have a zoning district, it would not have regulations tied to it and could not, from my understanding, could not be developed, basically.
That's correct, can, can I be heard? I don't know if I can be heard or not.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, so if, um, if you, if the sixty days were passed and there were no, uh, initial zoning assigned to this property, uh, and the, and there was no request for any rezoning, then, um, it would be in limbo as far as what could be done on the property, so no, no permits could really be issued for the property, uh, because it wouldn't have a zoning that anybody could compare, compare it to for you. So it would be, um, in limbo and nothing could really be done with it under, under development ordinance.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Chuck. Avery, I have a question. Um, this is the same conditional use zoning that is on the other section of that property. The same exact condition, okay.
Yes.
Any questions from the board? Any additional questions? I'll, I'll make the recommendation that we recommend approval to this, to the Stokesdale Town Council at the next meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think we probably need to have a, may I miss the public hearing, was our public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, miss, I guess we need to open for public comment and, and then close it if it hasn't already been done.
We did.
Okay, very good, okay.
That's impressive, dude, talk, get him on.
Yeah. Um, reason why, you wanna? You've gotta, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because it, because it matches, um, it's reasonable, it matches the, uh, area around it, and it's consistent with the current zoning, uh, of the same piece of property.
I'll second.
Curtis?
I'm aye.
Steven?
Aye.
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 And I'm also out. New business, uh, site plan review case number twenty-three dash oh six dash S I T E dash zero 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 four four seventy-seven twenty-three NC Highway sixty-eight. The subject property is located at seventy-seven twenty-three and seventy-seven twenty-five NC Highway sixty-eight, Guilford Tax Parcel Numbers one six three seven seven four and number one six three seven seven one in the Oak Ridge Township. Approximately eighteen hundred feet north of the intersection of NC Highway sixty-eight and Hall River Road, compromising approximately six point zero nine acres. The subject property is zoned CZHB, conditional zoning highway business, subject to the conditions indicated. This is a request for approval of a site plan proposing a warehouse self-storage development consisting of approximately fifty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty square feet of storage space across nine buil- buildings, as well as approximately eighty-four hundred and twenty-five square feet of outdoor boat and recreational vehicle storage. And do you have a staff report, Mr. Avery?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the only comments that I have are that the project was reviewed at the technical review committees, uh, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meetings, it's been cooking for a while. Uh, the site plan has also been reviewed over time individually by Guilford County staff, and the staff comments for all of those reviews are included in your packets. As far as a recommendation, staff recommends denial of the site plan as submitted, with the option for the applicant to revise and resubmit for the following reasons. Number one, the site plan includes outside storage in the form of boat and RV storage, as you mentioned, which is prohibited in association with the warehouse self-storage use in the highway business zoning district as, uh, indicated in section six dash four point nine one F one of the Stokesdale Development Ordinance. Number two, the site plan does not meet the minimum required landscape buffer, which is a type A minimum average width of fifty feet between the subject property and the adjacent residential property to the north, and that's as determined, uh, from table six dash three dash one in the Stokesdale Development Ordinance. And number three, the site plan shows two buildings, which are addressed as number seven seven two three and number seven seven two three dash A on the plans. It shows those two buildings along the eastern property line encroaching somewhat into the minimum required ten foot side setback between properties that are zoned highway business, uh, and adjacent non-residential properties, and that's as determined by table four dash four dash, dash five in the Stokesdale Development Ordinance. And that concludes my staff report.
Okay. If, if you got something to say, go, go ahead.
Good evening, Bill Greco, P O Box three four seven Oak Ridge, representing the applicant this evening. As you're aware, uh, site plan is a technical review. Uh, this evening, we would like to present some additional information and would be pursuing conditional approval, based on these minor revisions, I'm gonna take these in the same order that, uh, staff has presented them in. Uh, the, the first item is outside storage. So the boat and RV storage piece, um, is being deemed outside storage, and that's just a literal straight reading out of the ordinance. To my knowledge currently, there are three operating mini storage facilities in Stokesdale today. There's three of them, I designed all three of them, the same owner owns all three of them, and we're all together on this one as well. We would look to, uh, precedent and previous interpretations. Two of the three existing ones, uh, were approved with some version of truck, RV or boat parking. I would suggest to you that if we look at the ordinance, you will find many, many, many references to no outside storage. And it, it is worthy of discussion and some interpretation by the board. Uh, what we've arrived at previously is when it relates to a mini storage facility. No outside storage, um, means when your unit's full, you can't pile stuff outside and put a tarp over it. That means if you have a field, just an open field, you can't declare that a, a storage facility and start spray painting squares on the ground and rent those out. As it applies to other businesses, manufacturing, wholesaling, retail, et cetera, et cetera, most of those say no outside storage. You have to remember this ordinance, um, actually its current form is probably pushing seventy-five years old. So folks used to do things like that in the old days, they'd open a store and they'd keep the stuff outside, uh, and then bring it into the store. So again, we can look through the ordinance in detail and see that no outside storage is certainly applied to a lot of uses. But in the context of mini storage, and particularly as it relates to precedent, uh, we don't feel like that is appropriate in this instance. That's our point on, on the first one there, and again, there's, there's already two, we've got some established precedent there. The second point was the landscape buffer, uh, and there's a reference to a table. If you look at what I've handed you out, the bottom right-hand corner, there's another reference. Six dash three dash four, if the required building setback is less than the required planting yard, the building setback shall control. So if your building setback is ten feet, zero feet, five feet, doesn't matter, that takes precedence over the landscape buffer. However, you still have to plant at the same rate, if that makes sense. You're putting the same number of plants, it's just that buffer width is reduced to match the building setback. match the building setback. So we have it shown correctly the way we have it. This, you know, as Mr. Two mentioned, this plan, I actually started on this in twenty-twenty. It's been kicked around since twenty-three. I think it's been through at least three, if not four, planters through Guilford County. So if you'll look at that section of the ordinance and look at what we have shown, we're happy to discuss it. But we do have it at the appropriate width on the western side where there are no buildings. So we feel like we've got it pretty well dialed in. The third item is the two buildings. If you look at those two buildings, the building to the north, the comment's absolutely correct. It's too close. We will simply reduce the depth of that building by five feet, and that will be in compliance. The second building, seven-seven-two-three, that's an accessory structure. The second page of what I've given you there tells you that the accessory structure can be within five feet of the property line as long as it's less than six-hundred square feet, which we are. So that is an accessory. The, the primary building and primary structures are obviously the thousands and thousands of square feet of, of storage. So we believe the office at six-hundred feet, square feet, excuse me, is appropriate as shown, and we acknowledge that we need to reduce the depth of the other building, seven-seven-two-three dash A, and we're happy to do so. And again, we think this plan is ready for conditional approval based on, these are minor administrative tweaks, moving that one line on that building. We would need your recommendation or ruling on whether or not boat and RV parking is truly outside storage. If you do arrive at that conclusion, I'm just taking those words off, and it's gonna be oversized parking spaces for folks that are in and out with trailers and U-Hauls and so forth and so on. So it's a, it's more of an administrative kind of a tweak thing than a do-over or removing any surfaces or anything in that nature. We're too far along in this process with this plan. We're not gonna remove all of that. So in any event, happy to address any questions, entertain any further discussion, look through the ordinance, anything you guys may want to do on this. We appreciate the review, appreciate the staff's been put in an awkward position in this one. It's hard to walk into a plan that's been kicked around for three or four years and understand what's been discussed previously and agreed upon or verbal or the history of the town, frankly, where we see that precedent on some of those items. But thanks again and happy to discuss further.
I, I have a question. This, this subject property is zoned C Z.
Navy Washburn.
How, highway use business, unless I'm incorrect. What's the zoning of the other two facilities that are, that have outside storage?
I believe they're similar, and if you're asking, it's, it doesn't matter particularly with the zoning, it's the additional development conditions that are placed on specific uses. So if you look, if you just flip through the ordinance, ice cream store, there might be two things special about that. Barber shop, there might be two things special about that. That's where the outside storage comes from. It's not tied to zoning, it's tied to the use. I'm not, I don't remember the zoning on the others, to be honest with you.
I would object to that a little bit, so that Mr. Greco is right that it applies to the use, but it applies to certain, it applies to the use within certain zoning districts, and in this case, it applies specifically to the warehouse self-storage use within the general business and highway business zoning districts, but not in the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning district.
Okay.
And my understanding is that the other two sites are zoned light industrial? Is that right, Avery?
The two that I had been, the Rymac storage on, I don't quite remember the address.
That's one-fifty-eight.
One-fifty-eight and then.
Stokesdale Storage on B and G Court.
Right. I believe both of those are zoned light industrial.
Okay. So there is a zoning difference between those two properties and the subject property?
For the purposes of applying that, those individual development standards that Mr. Greco referenced.
And N C sixty-eight has a scenic corridor requirement. Where is the scenic corridor boundaries on this map?
That's a good question.
They're well beyond the property, to the west.
I believe to Mr. Greco's point, the entire property is contained within the, the scenic corridor.
So that means there's the limits on, what's it, uncontiguous space of?
True, but staff in this case interprets those to apply when they are not screened from view from the public right-of-way. And in this case, since, because of the configuration of the property, because it's setback at least a good, almost two-hundred feet from the right-of-way, staff was not applying those. Considered the property to be screened.
And how will it be screened?
By virtue of the distance, by virtue of the front property being relatively wooded, there is a street planting yard required along the, or front right-of-way. And if that second property were to ever be developed, it would also have to, to implement landscape buffer plantings.
When you say the second property, which one?
The one that is identified as lot number one on the site plan that Mr. Greco just handed out.
I have a couple of questions that.
Yes, sir.
Were not necessarily included in the recommendation or, or the reasons for your recommendation to decline. Going through the various submissions, it's noted several times that self-storage cannot be located on a parcel larger than five acres. Now, these two parcels, as I understand it, one is a little over three acres and the other's a little over two acres, but the total is six point, almost six-point-one acres. How are we handling that in, in conjunction with that question? Several comments in there that these two parcels need to be combined in order to review and approve the site plan.
Right.
How are we addressing that?
So the, so you will see on the site plan that Mr. Greco handed out, there is an old property line identified, old P slash L, kind of two-thirds of the way toward the left if you're going from the right, so one-third of the way from left to right. So the property was reconfigured, recombined, or they, a plat reflecting the recombination was approved by staff. And so what the bold property lines that you see on this site plan represent the new property lines post conveyance, I guess, after the property would be.
Property line, you've, you've said part then, you've, you've kind of combined the six-point-one acres, but then you've re-sub, re-divided that one acre at the front.
That's my understanding, right, right.
To meet that five-acre requirement.
Uh, well, so that, yeah, the one, so the property that's being developed under this site plan, and Mr. Greco might, might want to jump in, but that's about five acres exactly, right? So just basically under that threshold. The other property, the one-point-zero-one acre property is not really included. It, it does include kind of a placeholder, you know, to-be-developed, you know, drawing on there, but it's not really part of this development that's being reviewed.
Okay. But when it is developed, then your buffer from the scenic corridor is gone.
And would have, and would potentially, one, be developed and, two, would have to plant a street planting yard along the front as well.
But that's not part of the approval process here.
That's true.
With the, I have a question. With the property in two, two sections, and now it looks like the, the staff comments it's been updated since then into sort of a new two, two properties, is the, is the zoning still the same on the recombined?
Yeah. Both, both properties were zoned the same, just two different lots.
Okay.
From a buffer perspective, to your point, Mr. Louis, you're gonna get one buffer now, landscaping buffer with this site plan. The future development parcel will add two more layers of buffer. There'll be a street planting yard required, and then there will be another additional buffer right beside the one we're doing with this one. Where my red boxes are on what I handed out to you.
I do want to articulate a couple concerns that I have, or kind of, I guess, technical disagreements with what Mr. Greco presented as far as his rebuttal to the, the recommendation here. As far as the landscape buffer, there is a section that says, as Mr. Greco pointed out, you know, the setback less than planting yard, if the required building setback is less than the required planting yard, which is true in this case, the building setback shall control reducing the required planting yard width only alongside the building. The intention, as far as I can tell from this passage, is if, if the building is encroaching is, if the building meets the setback and by virtue of that diminishes the, the width of the buffer, like if the buffer is required to be fifty feet, the setback's only twenty-five, the building has to meet that twenty-five-foot setback. It's not required to be pushed all the way fifty feet. And so along the building where it is meeting the setback, but the buffer is kind of smushed, for lack of a better term, it's allowed to be diminished within that zone. As you can see from the site plan, that is not really the case here. I think that's kind of a liberty as far as interpretation, but that's just my opinion. In terms of the accessory structure, as Mr. Greco called it, that, it is true that a customary accessory structures equal to or less than six-hundred square feet have a side or rear yard setback of five feet. In this case, this is an office that is part of the overall development. I don't think it's reasonable to consider that a customary accessory use. It's an integral part of the development.
So on, I have, I have a question about what you said, Avery. Where you're talking about, and I'm gonna use your lack of a better term, smushed at the building, does that mean that the same fifty-feet buffer or whatever is supposed to be everywhere else but where that building is, and it's only gonna be, that buffer's gonna be twenty-five feet there is what you're saying?
That is my reading. So the, the exact wording is, the building setback shall control reducing the required planting yard width only alongside the building. And as Mr. Greco did point out, the, the planting rate of the, like, regardless of whether it needs to meet the width, the planting yard rate would still apply. So even if the whole thing is smushed as it's shown here, it would still need to meet the planting rate.
Okay.
Is that the one where it's twenty-seven-point-nine feet? Am I reading that plan right? Is that, is that what we're talking about at the top? Let's see, there's a distance from the corner of the building to the property line, it's twenty-seven-point-nine feet.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I'm, I'm referring, I think the whole, the discussion is about the entire front or the entire northern property line landscape buffer, so along that area that you're talking about.
Okay.
So this is absolutely why we're here this evening, having the site plan discussion. I think all you're getting as a board is two ways to interpret that. I looked at it alongside the building, I've looked at it, previous reviews, done, done it that way. You can take it one direction or the other. It's not a hill for me to die on. We can extend until we run into, until we get up closer to the buildings. When I look at the site as a whole, when I read alongside the building, there's buildings all across there, so I go from the edge of one building to the edge of the other. That's what I declare is alongside the building. Staff's taking a different approach. You're getting the same number of trees no matter what. It doesn't matter to me if they're spread out in a fifty-foot buffer or they're smushed in a twenty-five-foot buffer. There's no cost benefit to me to that one at all, so that's not a hill for me to die on. I'm happy to extend it some distance, but again, the point is, the planting rate remains the same. You're gonna get the same number of trees. They're just either gonna be in a tighter space or in a wider space. They're more effective in a tighter space, to be candid, but that's why we're here. You can, anybody can, I got an opinion, Avery's got an opinion, and you guys have to vote, and I'm sure you'll have an opinion.
Any additional questions from the board?
Well, I'm still concerned with the zoning and the interpretation of, of outdoor storage. In referencing the other two properties that are under common ownership, both of them have been zoned light industrial. One is conditionally zoned light industrial, the other is, is straight light industrial. The recommendation was made back in two thousand twenty-three that the zoning needed to be corrected if this outdoor storage was to be considered and permitted. I'm confused as to why that was not addressed before now, two and a half years later, and the question comes up that, you know, is it zoned properly? Or now we're gonna try to stretch the definition of what is outdoor storage. I mean, being a simple layperson that doesn't do this every day, the two things that jumped out at me were, number one, combine the two lots for ownership purposes, and then rezone them, and then do the site plan. It looks like that we've got the cart before the horse in, to a degree on, on this, and after multiple submissions, it was not addressed at that point. And now we're still looking at a conditional, or a request for conditional acceptance. Leads me to some other questions, but if we could address the rezoning and, and the definitions that way. I mean, it seems to me it would have been simpler just to present a rezoning request rather than proceeding with the site plan and now coming back and trying to figure out how we're gonna get this through.
I, I'm a little lost. The only thing with the, the question asked to the zoning is, does this board believe that boat and RV storage in the context of development specific conditions? Are we allowed to have boat and RV storage or not? And, and as I mentioned, the zoning is intact for the site. We can just take those two words off the plan and move on. And as far as coming back for an additional thing, when, when I say conditional approval, these three items are what we're faced. I'm happy to come back to a meeting every week, but conditional approval is where we're at. I don't think we're trying to reinvent the wheel here. We've just, we made it through a couple revisions and nobody ca, came up with that, much to Mr. Two's credit. He came into it cold, read the ordinance and got where he got.
I do want to dispute that real quick. So in the record here of the submitted summary report, you can see July fifth, twenty-twenty-three, Justin Snyder, his first round of reviews for this, more than two years ago. I would consider boat and RV stor, uh, parking as outdoor storage, so.
What's the rest of it say?
Uh, I would consider boat and RV parking as outdoor storage since these items are being stored essentially outdoors. I think you will need to ask the planning board if they will allow this since outdoor storage is prohibited under Stokesdale Development Standards.
And that's what we're doing, is following our original instruction, which was to ask the planning board.
Well, I guess my question is, if you've got two facilities that exist and they are, are zoned light industrial and they permit outdoor storage as described boat and RV, why are we making a fuss over the existing zoning and didn't we go back and rezone it to light industrial where we know that that's permitted? We're, we're, we're looking at definitions now, and you're asking us to make a determination on definitions where we've got two examples of, that's allowed, it's already in place, there's no exception, there's no discretion, this, this discrepancy in what we think outdoor storage is. Does that make sense?
It does to me.
It does to me.
I mean, we're talking about precedent. We've got two properties that are already zoned a certain way, and precedent has been applied to those two properties. Why not zone this property the same way and apply the same precedent? I mean, I'm, I think.
Yeah, I just.
Is that what you were saying?
Exactly.
Yep.
And two years previous, we, we started that conversation.
And that's fine as well, as I mentioned, we just changed our wording on that one. I think the last remaining item is, is the office a customary accessory use. I would suggest to you that it is. A great number of storage facilities in this day and time do not have people on site in a building. A lot of them are a key code at the gate, a key code at the door. This is an accessory item too, in my estimation. The bigger picture. And it may be one of those items that's not built initially. That may not be necessary until such time as occupancy rates are up high and you've got a lot of people in and out. But to, to my mind anyway, the main structure, the main function here is those six, seven, eight warehouse buildings. The office is an accessory. And if it's not, the same solution applies, so I'll take five feet out of the building.
Are there any more questions from the board? Does anybody have a motion or any more comments or discussion?
I would just like to remind the board that the, the issue in front of you is whether this site plan complies with the ordinance as the ordinance is writ, or a reasonable interpretation of the ordinance. And so Mr. Greco is suggesting certain interpretations which the board can elect to adopt or not adopt, but, but the question is, does it comply with the ordinance or not? Is the question for tonight?
Mr. Winfrey, can anybody tell us, and I don't even know if this is applicable, but can anybody tell us how the marina is zoned for the dry dock of those boats?
That's not in Guilford County.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, my bad. Okay. Because I understand the distinction that Mr. Greco was making between somebody having more stuff than they can fit in their unit and piling it up outside versus a marked parking place for an RV or a boat. So I don't know if I would consider that outdoor storage any more than me parking my car in my driveway is outdoor storage.
You didn't have an HOA.
I don't, you're right. But I do, I do think that's a reasonable distinction that he's making on what is outdoor storage.
My understanding is these, these spaces are being rented out though. I mean, I'm assuming that, that, that somebody's going to be paying rent to put their RV there or their vehicle there.
That's correct. I, I kind of go back to, to what was said at the beginning of this, was we're setting precedent and the precedence on the other two properties is they are light industrial and this, and that matches the outside storage and it's, it's not a question. And, and this, we're, we're zoned differently and I, I just think we could do it correctly and not be here guessing at it. Is, is my opinion communicating to my fellow, fellow board member here?
Help me out again, what is this one zoned as?
Highway business. And the other two properties in Stokesdale are light industrials. So one's CZ light industrial and one's light industrial.
I have an issue with the screening of this development. The screening is not part of the five acres. It's thrown on lot one. Am I right there, Bill?
The landscaping as shown is appropriate for this parcel. It does meet the ordinance, absolutely. The only question is, do I need to extend the 50 foot width of the landscape buffer along the northern property line? Do I need to extend that further towards the buildings? The landscaping is 100% in compliance, there's no question there.
But I think, I think, if I understand you, Mr. Louis, you're talking about up here between lot one and lot two, kind of facing highway 68.
Yes.
It looks like that, the buffer there is on lot one, which is not, and, and maybe I'm interpreting this incorrect, but...
You are, there's a buffer on lot two between the build, the buildings that are in question as far as being too close, there's a five foot type D yard along that whole property line.
Maybe I'm interpreting, but this, this big black line in the building are right on top of each other.
They're not, those are topography lines. There's, there's either five feet or 10 feet there. I can't recall.
In my looking at this then, the only screening is a five foot yard.
Which is the ordinance requirement?
For...
Type D.
Type D.
Yes, sir.
Where's that type D ordinance talking about? And is that screened enough for the scenic corridor?
Scenic corridor does not necessarily change a planting rate or a buffer yard. Scenic corridor has some mention of architecture and materials and arrangements on site. Does not speak to changing a planting rate or anything whatsoever with screening.
Okay. What you're saying though is because of the screening, the unbroken length of, what's it, the long building is not part of, or it, I guess I'm saying, because of the screening, you don't have to make or meet the scenic corridor requirements for the building 7723B?
No, we do, we do meet the requirements. We're going to have a fence, we're going to have landscaping between the property line and the buildings. 7723A and 7723, that's where the landscaping is.
All right, well, as I remember with the scenic corridor, you have to have a, you have to have an interruption every, I guess it's every 30 feet in the facade.
I'd like to pull that up.
And sheet metal is only allowed to screen from review, from view by a required planting yard. So is that required planting yard five feet?
The, the required planting yard is five feet and I don't remember the exact verbiage if we could get Robbie or somebody to pull it up, but the 30 feet is a recommendation from my memory, it's not a hard and fast requirement.
No, as I remember it is.
That's why I just ask if we could pull it up, because I don't...
Let's do that then.
I think the wording is discouraged. You know where it's at, Robbie?
Yes, I was, let's see, this is regarding the screening.
If you look at page one of 15, Jay Snyder is saying it, "A change in facade or material is required every 30 feet on each facade." So you've got 205 feet of building and no change.
The wording is, is discouraged. Long blank walls are discouraged. For every 30 feet of building frontage, there shall be a change in front building facade.
Okay.
And that's in materials, relief, elevation or other light distinction. So with standing seam metal, we get the relief if you're, if you're now discussing the building itself and not the landscape buffer.
Yeah, I'm discussing the building. I'm discussing the building because this is an uninterrupted piece of material in the scenic corridor. And you're saying that's okay because you've got the, the screening from lot one.
I think what I'm saying is it's highly subjective and at this point, I mean, I'm, again, we can come back separately with staff on elevations for a specific building if you would like us to do that, to show something. However, that does buck everything that's been approved. I can, we can get on Google, Google Earth, Google Street Maps and we can see all the new stuff that's been built with a 30 foot uninterrupted wall with absolutely no change in anything. That's easily demonstrated. We're not unique in that.
Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a, a motion from the board?
Don't everybody speak at once?
Well, with, with regard to the outdoor storage, I guess the board needs to make a decision on, I would say either you, you could approve it on the condition that they remove the outdoor storage for RVs and was it boats? I forget what else was in that outdoor storage. So you could, so one option for the board would be to, to say, we approve it, but they must do X, Y, and Z. And it could be remove the outdoor storage if the board thought that did not comply with the ordinance. You could say on the condition that they install the landscape buffers and that they have adequate landscape buffers between highway 68 and, and the site, because lot one is, I guess is not really part of this approval at this point. So you could, you could attach conditions, I guess is what I'm saying. Even if you thought that the plan currently did not comply with the ordinance, you could say we will approve it if they do make the changes to the plan.
Mr. Winfrey, I have a question. If we put conditions on there, where's the checks and balances that this, this occurs?
Well, if, if it were...
When does that come back to the town for?
That would then become a zoning enforcement issue. So if, if, if you said no outdoor storage and then at some point there is outdoor storage, then it says only violation and that would subject the owner of the property to enforce the proceedings.
Or we could just rezone it correctly and there wouldn't be these problems.
Well, that, that'd be a request for that, yes.
I mean, we can't do it, but the property could be re-zoned.
That's right, right.
One other question for you, is, is there any, I don't think there's an issue here, but is there any issue with light industrial in that scenic corridor? Making that zoning...
Well, it would be because in this area, it's being developed as residential. I'm pretty sure that the parcel to the north of it owned by Betty Luhann is being sold as a residential development.
I mean, my concern is the trees, the landscaping will take care of the visual, but that doesn't make a difference in terms of how close you are to the property line and potential noise and other things that might, trees might not address. So if I, you know, I know that's hypothetical, we don't know what's going to go on that adjacent property, but even as it is, that property owner is entitled to, you know, observance of that ordinance. I know if it was next to my property, I would want that.
We do have a similar property that we just approved that's just a little bit further down 68. Can you look up and see what that's zoned, Robbie, the AAA?
That was...
Yes.
Just for the car wash?
AAA.
AAA.
Because it's just a half a mile from...
It looks like the subject property for that, at 7563 NC highway 68 for AAA storage is zoned highway business.
Okay, so these two are currently zoned the same.
Is this one highway or general?
Highway.
Highway.
Highway, okay.
Yeah, I don't know whether the, I don't know whether AAA had the outdoor storage or not.
Well, that would, that would be a site plan review anyway.
Right.
Any comments or conversation with board?
I think in this area, it's being developed as residential and across the road, there's dawn acres and they're just, they're going to put houses there. And I know that the parcel to the north of it is being marketed as residential. I think that it's going to be a sore thumb in this area. Unless it's properly screened. And, and I've got an issue with using lot one... Unless it's properly screened and, and I've got an issue with using lot one as a screen now, but it's not, it's not a permanent screen. Conceptually, they're gonna clear out the trees and put an office spot in there. And five feet is not much of a planting yard screen. So I think for two reasons, that we're asking for outdoor storage in an area, basically a residential area and also a long metal building in a residential area.
I think again, and Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong, I think our charge here is to review this and determine whether the current plan is in compliance with the ordinance as written.
That's right, or any, any reasonable interpretation of the ordinance. Um, yes. And, um, and the, the staff has, has said that they're okay with the screening, um, but you're free to, accept or reject any part of that if you feel like that the screening is inadequate for, um, based on lack of patrol over, over lot one. Cause lot one, I guess, is not part of this, of this site plan review.
I will just add, based on the, or, or relative, relative to the discussion about the landscape buffering of, or the screening of this lot number two from the road. So as shown on this site plan, the, the elevation of even the closest building to the road is about 10 feet lower in elevation than the, the edge of the road. And in addition to that, you have the five-feet buffer that Mr. Greco is talking about. When this lot number one is developed, it will have to have an additional five-foot buffer as well as an eight-foot buffer along the road in addition to that elevation drop. And so that just goes into the reason why staff for this, for those purposes, staff was not concerned about the screening or the, for the scenic corridor purposes.
Because it's a 10-foot drop?
It's a combination of those things.
Well, that makes it even worse because as somebody's driving along the scenic corridor, they're gonna see this long, long bare roof. But what you're saying is when that front lot's developed, there would be two, two buffers in between.
Three, if you count the street yard buffer.
And depending on what it's developed into, if there's a structure or whatever, that would break the line of sight as well.
Right.
Oh, true. I see what you mean. So the, the scenic corridor requirements would apply to any development on the front. Correct. That's right.
Any more thoughts, comments?
Hey, Bill, let me, help me with the interpretation. There's a little box that says office 600 square feet. Is that referring to number 7723? Or is that, or is that going to be another?
No, sir. That's, that is correct and, and it references 7723. That's the one that, that we believe is an accessory structure that, that should be approved as is. I mean, essentially we've got, the, the three issues at hand are the three that are laid out in the staff report and the three that I've attempted to address.
I mean, to the board, I, I think we're down to the, the RV and boat parking and, and how that compares to the zoning and how we wanna address that. And then the buffer down the northern, what I believe to be the northern property line there and the, the average width of that buffer being 50 feet or not. And then the setback on a couple of these, um, buildings not meeting the minimum. And that's the, that's the three things at hand.
We need a motion.
There's one or two ways we could go. I guess we could approve with condition. You know, deny it and then, uh, recommend a rezoning, I guess. I don't know.
I, I don't think they're gonna rezone the property. I'm hearing enough here. They're just gonna remove the parking spaces, so, um...
We're just gonna remove the, we're not gonna remove the spaces. They're gonna stay. Rezoning's not part of the equation.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion.
I can't hear what's being said. I'm sorry.
I, I'm gonna make a motion that we deny this request because we're, I feel like we're, we're circumventing the zoning here. And I, I'm hearing that and I'm, I'm not gonna go along with it. I can get a second or I can die on the hill. I don't care, but...
My concern, if I could go back to Mr. Winfrey for just one minute, um, you, you mentioned a reasonable interpretation of the ordinance. I, I don't know how else you can interpret 50 feet and 10 feet other than 50 feet and 10 feet. So those to me are pretty solid. Am I, am I on the right track?
I think that's right. And, and this, and with all due respect to Mr. Greco, I think the, the outdoor storage thing was a little, um, I, I hate to have to explain that to Superior Court Judge and, and say, well, this is, they didn't mean outdoor storage in the context of the storage unit. They're talking about you ran out of stuff and you started dumping stuff outside. So I, I, I think that was probably a little bit of a tortured interpretation of outdoor storage. If I had to defend it, put it that way.
We've got two existing facilities that operate similarly that are zoned differently. I'm gonna second the motion for denial.
Any discussion from the board?
Other than when we vote affirmatively, we are denying...
That's right. Okay. Curtis?
I vote aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Aye.
Ah. All right, next one.
Well, I guess I should, at this point, Mr. Chairman, I should say that there's a, um, opportunity for appeal. I think the, our ordinance says they had 15 days, um, to appeal to town council, but under 160-day, I believe that the time period for that appeal is 30 days. Um, I think Mr. Wagner has a form, uh, for, for that appeal if that's what, which should be taken. And my current reading of 160D is that because, uh, an appeal would be of an administrative decision, I mean, if it goes to town council, it'd have to be, uh, in the nature of a quasi judicial proceeding, essentially reviewing your administrative action tonight.
Okay.
Which is a little bit different bird than repeating what was done tonight.
Okay. So is my, or is our motion and the action of the board accurate?
Yeah, yeah, it is, it's accurate, but I just wanted to make sure everybody would, you know, the ordinance says 15 days for appeal and I need to make clear that, uh, anyone who wants to appeal, it would be 100, it'd be 30 days to appeal.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public, another public comment period. Each speaker must identify themselves, give their names and addresses, and each speaker is limited to three minutes. Is there anybody that wants to speak?
Phil Greco, appeal box 347 Oak Ridge. Uh, along the appeal route, I will be appealing, um, if I'm, and Mr. Winfrey, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, ordinance requires that you provide me with the reasons for denial in writing. Site plans are technical reviews, so you'll need to cite the ordinance's specific, uh, sections that supported your vote for denial. And if Mr., uh, Robbie could get those to me just as soon as possible, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, folks.
Okay. And you, you had, you can look those up.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, um, so after this meeting concludes, uh, we'll, we always, uh, provide two letters, uh, in instances like this. One is a letter of decision to the applicant and in that is where the ordinances would be referenced. And so because of the tedious nature of this one, we'll probably have, Mr. Winfrey review that before we send it, but we'll also send that to the board.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else wanna speak from the public? I think that pretty much eliminates everybody here. Uh, announcements, town planning board announcements. The next regular town council meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 9th at 7:00 PM inside the Stokesdale Town Council chambers. The next regular Stokesdale Town Planning Board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 23rd, at 2025 at 7:00 PM inside the Stokesdale Town Hall Council chambers. Uh, next item is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Now, when you're talking about outdoor storage, I had a trailer in my, in my driveway.
Thank you for being here, Chuck.
Back to, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck.
I'm back to.
Storage and your trailer against the wall.
Uh, thank you.
Trailer parked on the driveway.
I don't, I mean, I'd have to go look at, I don't think that'd be an issue.
Of course, that was George.
I was, I wanted to say, I'm still hesitant to speak, but I was right on the same deal.